I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
Council President Garland.
Here.
Council Kuiper.
Here.
Council Young.
Here.
Council Brous.
Here.
Council Griffin.
Here.
Council Rosner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Sylvia. Um, approval of the agenda. Um, when we get to it, we'll continue item A and I'll um, be clear about that just because we need to get a new planning commissioner representative on there, I think. Um, other than that, any other changes to the planning, uh, to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, consent agenda. Two items on the consent agenda. Item A is approval of the August twenty first, twenty eighteen city council meeting minutes and item B is resolution twenty eighteen zero seven five authorizing the city manager to sign a contract with CFM Strategic Communications to provide federal government affairs consulting and lobbying services. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve consent.
Second.
Um, may I have a motion and second, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you council. Says and comments. Anyone like to address council? We have a couple forums. Xana Mays. Welcome Xana Mays, AKA my mother. Please, um, what's on your mind? Am I in trouble? Maybe.
So I went to out Roy Rogers from Sherwood to go shopping this weekend. And I was very upset to notice that a good many of the trees along Roy Rogers are dying. And I'm wondering about that. I mean, is there a disease or more likely are they dying from lack of water? And um, they just look so sad. They're, they've lost a lot of their leaves and they just, they just look awful. And um, I don't understand why the city would allow these trees, which have undoubtedly been there a couple of years anyway now and have cost us money, um, why they are being allowed to die. And then when I was attending the farmer's market, I noticed that the flower boxes have also been neglected. When the cannery square was built, it was supposed to be a proud addition to our downtown. And now, um, you may notice I'm focused on plants and flowers. Now it's looking kind of bedraggled. Um, it wouldn't be that hard or take that much expertise to plant those boxes so that they had year-round appeal. And I would just encourage the city workers to do that. I'd be really, I'd really like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and Joe, you ask a question?
I was just wondering where on Roy Rogers were the trees?
All along Roy Rogers when you turn to go.
Within the city limits.
Yeah. Within the city limits. So in the planter strips, in the middle of the road?
On both sides.
In the middle.
Okay.
The last meridian, there are two trees that are looking bad, but the ones on the side are pitiful.
Hmm, okay.
Okay.
I have a question too.
Yep.
When you're talking about the flower boxes, are you talking about the ones that are hanging?
No, I'm talking about the planter boxes, the plant, the boxes that
The raised beds?
Should be in and
By the Sherwood Center for the Arts?
Cannery Square.
Okay.
No, not there. Right there where the farmer's market is.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. You wanna say anything now?
I know Craig's in the back and we don't necessarily want to get into a long discussion. We can reach back to your mom, Mayor.
Right. Her contacts and foes on the street.
Contact information is there, but.
Keep going there, you know.
He's going to get some water.
He just ran in the other room.
He thought you were calling him up and then he's out the door.
I think he's going to get some water.
Comment on the Roy Rogers trees?
Ah, okay.
At least briefly?
So, uh, we are having issues with Roy Rogers. Uh, I don't know if people know this, but when those trees were planted, a lot of those trees are planted right on top of asphalt. The old roadbed that has a small amount of gravel and dirt that they've put in there, and that's what those trees were planted in. When that was first planted, we actually went in there and had to replace about a hundred and twenty-two trees because some of the same issues. Now, we've had a lot of heat this summer. We've lost trees throughout the city. So that's some of it, but we've also had irrigation issues out there also because you turn it on and it runs down the concrete or the, sorry, the old asphalt road base. And, uh, we have people along Roy Rogers that complain about the amount of water that live off towards, uh, the refuge because it runs in their backyard. So we're dealing with that. Uh, but some of it is, we've had irrigation issues out there this year, but some of it is, is because the trees are older. Those are tough trees according to our arbers to stay alive. And those are the things we're running against out there. So we've had to replace probably the hundred and twenty-two and each year we've had to replace trees along that roadway. So doesn't surprise me. The county built that. So that's the issue there. Uh, I will look over here at the cannery square, but we are having a lot of vandalism in the square. Uh, on top of, I don't, I'm not going to say anything about the planter beds because I don't know what condition they're in by sitting in here. But right now I would say we've probably got ten thousand dollars or more worth of damage in the square from skateboarding, kids vandalizing it and everything else. Busting up by the planners, so there's issues there. So.
And actually I walked by because this issue came up when I was out of town last week to look at some of the damage and the graffiti and other things. And I did notice one of the planter boxes looks a little barren. So I, I share the same concern, the one closest to the road. It doesn't look like the plants have gotten much TLC in terms of water and things like that. So we'll look at that issue as well. I think the issue about the vandalism is more of an issue, um, that we're dealing with right now.
Do we have cameras in the square?
Just added some additional cameras. And Chief Growth, Craig and I are talking about some other patrols and other things to try to address the issue.
Do we, I can't remember, do we have a posted sign?
Yes.
That says spy on candid camera?
Or whatever.
Yes. It doesn't say that, but
Doesn't say you're on camera, but it, uh, I can't remember if that's over there, but it is. There are signs over there saying no skateboarders, no, it's all over there, so.
Okay. But reminding them, little minions, that we got, we got you on tape and we're going to track you down.
I'd love to know skateboarding. By the way, you're on camera.
I don't know, but appreciate that Craig.
Thank you, Craig.
Uh, next I have Clyde List. Welcome Clyde.
I finally got here. I'm so naive. I showed up twice last month and I had the wrong night, so that's typical for me. Show up two, three times and finally get it right. Um, I'm very interested in, uh, talking about the energy of this eighteen ninety-three charter that we're celebrating on the thirteenth of this month. When I was, uh, stringing for the Sherwood Gazette, I stayed out of trouble with City Hall by being appointed to history. They wanted me to do something that wasn't controversial. So they gave me that job to look up some cute vignettes that could be put in the paper about our history. And I came across the original uh, minutes of eighteen ninety-three, which were handwritten. They were very hard to read. And so I set to work and transcribed those into computer-friendly text. And you have a copy of that, uh, somewhere in your files. I see my name on it every once in a while when it's in your hands, very flattering. And I also have a copy of it on my website, clydlist.com. Um, there was, uh, the word energy, I think, describes what we should be most excited about. These guys had, didn't have a clue what they were doing. It's already June eighteen ninety-three and they, and they've got a charter, boilerplate charter, signed by the governor that they have to have an election by January. So they got six months to have an election. And that means, uh, they also have to, uh, prove that they can run a town. They need a city hall. And they need a jail. And they need some ordinances that you can break so you can be in the jail. And they have nothing in, you know, in June, so they've got to get busy. And, uh, there's a number of clouds hanging over their heads. Uh, there's, uh, depression going on eighteen ninety-three was a very bad year. And on top of that, ever since the Jubilee Year of Queen Victoria, for some reason prices are starting to rise everywhere on everything. In a, throughout the nine, uh, nineteenth century, there was no inflation. I wish somebody would explain that to the Federal Reserve. Because economists don't seem to remember that that was our best century and we had no inflation. It sets in right about now, eighteen ninety-three. And our town fathers are baffled by it. They don't know what to make of it. They're marking down, uh, things that kind of, some of the bill of, uh, are coming in. Uh, one is for, uh, and these are ve- very detailed records. They, they have motions on everything, on, uh, on the latches, on, on, uh, door sills, on the, on the frames, every little detail. It, it suggests how serious this was. This was, uh, again, that their, their, the minutes are so detailed. Mr. Beach, uh, for shingles was fifteen sixty. That was called up. And on motion of smock was laid over until the next meeting and Mr. Eymann, Councilman Eymann was instructed to go see Mr. Beach in regard to the same. They're not happy with what he's charging. Uh, bill of Mr. So-and-so for hauling lime, he wanted a dollar and that was cut down to fifty cents. Bill of FM buyer for three days work on the foundation at a dollar seventy-five per day, amounting to five twenty-five, too much. That was cut down to four fifty. I understand you're giving me a little more than four minutes. Is that right? Okay.
Little bit more.
And, uh, so I'm, I'm getting into these details here more than I really meant to. Mr. Chapman for ironwork on the jail amount six twenty-five, cut down to four oh five. And these prices, uh, again, they, this is alarming. These prices, they, they don't, they don't, they have to do something. Well, I read this stuff to my writing class. Crystal Reynolds, uh, has a writing class that, uh, I'm taking part in across the street and they said, don't, don't read all those details. It sounds like a grocery list. And so she told me to read this on top. This is an essay I wrote to myself more than anything. And she thought this was the most interesting thing for us to celebrate, if you, if you please. Uh, anyone who has ever attended a meeting in small-town America has to wonder at the sophistication of the event. People that you know only as brick masons and computer programmers and yard workers are suddenly agreeing to play by rules of parliamentary procedure as complicated as those followed by Congress. This ability to stand one's ground even while standing aside has a long history in America. The California Gold Rush may have been an act of collective insanity, but the miners obeyed an elaborate set of regulations that were agreed to on the spot. Francis Parkman was impressed by how meeting procedures were used to quell the chaos of the Oregon Trail when crowds kept arriving to a number of a thousand or more. And new parties were constantly passing out from Independence, Missouri to join them. They were in great confusion, holding meetings, passing resolutions and drawing up regulations, but unable to unite in the choice of leaders to conduct them across the prairie. Earlier in our nation's history, British General Thomas Gage, whose job it was to keep the American colonies under control, deeply disapproved of America's meeting procedures. He especially disliked town council meetings, you guys. And he, uh, he esp- he referred to them as instruments of democratic despotism. In seventeen seventy-four, Gage advised the king to abolish all of this chatter and to install a more oligarchic British borough system. He vowed that he wasn't going to rest until he saw that all town meetings are absolutely abolished. Whilst those meetings exist, the people will be kept in a perpetual heat. Democracy is too prevalent in America and claims the greatest attention to prevent its increase, in his words. He published a proclamation forbidding most town meetings except by permission. Just to make the point, he sent his redcoats to a town meeting in Salem with bayonets drawn, where they formed a circle around the meeting house, waiting for the Salemites to understand that this was not proper behavior. And, uh, Mrs. Reynolds tells me that the kids in school actually are, know about this and they act this out in the third grade, which I think is wonderful. This is probably the most important news is that the Salemites, they simply slammed the doors and windows, went on with their meeting. General Gage didn't know what to make of it. He had never come across people like this before. And so I think that's the thought I'd like to leave, leave with you is how important you are. And, uh, it's not a given that, that we have the ability to meet and make our own decisions as common people do. Thank you.
Thank you very much Clyde.
I got tons of stuff here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Clyde.
Anyone else like to address council? Then, great.
James Bryant. I have been a citizen of Sherwood since about ninety-six. I am, I've re-envisioned myself as, into emergency management and I wanted to raise your awareness that September is the emergency preparedness month. And on the city website, I don't see very much alluding to it at all. Um, there are some good, there is good information on that site. However, there's nothing that says anything about emergency preparedness, uh, month in September. But to raise awareness, the city Sherwood does have that information there. It also, OEM has two weeks ready on their website as well as ready.gov has a bunch of information there. That's all I have. Any questions?
Awesome. I appreciate you
Thank you.
Very much. Anyone else says and comments? Seeing none, we will move to presentations. Um, we have two proclamations, um, not presentations. Um, the first is declaring September twenty-second, twenty eighteen as International Peace Commemoration Day, whereas the issue of peace embraces the deepest hopes for all peoples and remains humanity's guiding inspiration. Whereas in nineteen eighty-one, the United Nations proclaimed the International Day of Peace be devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples. Whereas the United Nations expanded the observer, observation of the International Day of Peace in twenty, two thousand and one to include a call for a day of global ceasefire and non-violence. An invitation and invite all nations and people to honor the cessation of hostilities for the duration of the day. Whereas there's a growing support in our, within our city for observation, for the observation of International Day of Peace, which affirms a vision of, of our world at peace and fosters cooperation between individuals, organizations and nations. Whereas global crisis impel all citizens to work towards converting humanity's noblest aspirations for world peace into the practical reality of a culture of peace for future generations. The Sherwood Rotary Club is a peace-building club and promotes world peace, uh, understanding and conflict resolution. Uh, therefore I, Mayor Sherwood, do proclaim September twenty-second as commemorating International Day of Peace throughout the city of Sherwood and urge all citizens to recognize International Day of Peace by participating in the Rotary Club of Sherwood's free family-friendly celebration, Saturday twenty, the twenty-second from ten AM to two PM, starting at the Sherwood Center of the Arts with a peace walk. And enjoy to visit peace poles, enjoy a peace labyrinth, craft, um, dream mobile, uh, witness a flag, world flag ceremony and enjoy performance by the Sherwood Dance Academy. Fantastic. Next proclamation, proclamation, uh, for Constitution Week. Our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessing of liberty for themselves and their prosperity, did ordain and establish the Constitution of the United States of America. Whereas it is our great, in greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to support, preserve and defend it against all encroachment. Whereas the anniversary of the signing of the Constitution provides a historic opportunity for all Americans to realize the achievements of all of our framers of the Constitution and the rights, privileges and responsibilities it affords. Whereas the independence guarantees, the independence guarantees to American citizens, whether by birth, by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week as designated by a proclamation of the President of the United States of America in accordance with public law nine one five. That's one of the shorter public law numbers. And now therefore I Keith Mays, on behalf of the city of Sherwood City Council, do proclaim, proclaim the week of September seventeenth to twenty-third, twenty eighteen as Constitution Week in the city of Sherwood. And urge everyone to celebrate and reflect during this week the many benefits of our federal constitution and American leadership. Very cool. Um, moving on to new business. Item A, as I've indicated, will move to meeting in two weeks. The one point of note, uh, the planning commission had recommended, uh, a member to the, uh, committee, um, Doug Scott. But he filed to run for city council along with two others and there's only three spots. So I figured we probably don't want to appoint somebody who's going to then get on the city council while they're still doing work. So if we could ask the planning commission to, um, reconsider, um, at their meeting next week. Does they have a meeting next week? Yep. And then, um, on here is blank, council liaison and council alternate. I hadn't asked. If anyone is interested, give me a call, see me after, um, if you're interested in being the primary or the alternate. And if there's three of you, we'll put you in a pit or a room together and the two that emerge are on it.
A pit.
Doesn't have to be a pit, we just put you in the room. Right, there's a, I can move some chairs around. And if Renee's in the, in the ring, just let her win. Out of the gate, you'll come out ahead. It's the right choice. Anyways, so, um, moving on to item B is resolution twenty eighteen zero seven six authorizing city manager to amend the existing software agreement with Open Gov to increase the agreement amount and add software. Katie?
Good evening. Um, first of all, I want to apologize for doing this under new business when we haven't talked about it before. Um, so just so you know, we've been talking with Open Gov and things have evolved over time as I've negotiated with them and we've gone back and forth to see how things could go. And we were able to negotiate what I believe is a fairly decent deal. But there is a timeline on it. It was supposed to be September first. I said, I'm going to need to get council in on it, so I have until tomorrow to fax over a decision. So that's why this is on there, um, in a meeting where we can actually have a decision made. So I do apologize for not having time to get the work session in there. Um, so I just wanted to, um, present to you a little bit what, what the reason is behind this, how it helps us um, and why I believe that it's worth the cost to the city. Um, even though when you look at the five-year cost in your staff report, it does look like a fairly large amount. Um, this program is one that, that I had looked at before and I had decided that the cost was too high for what it offered. And then in negotiating back and forth, they, um, offered to add in the workforce planning module at no cost. So this is a nine thousand seven hundred dollar deployment, which we would get for free. And then an additional nine thousand three hundred and eighty dollars a year, so until forty-six thousand nine hundred. Um, if we will be one of the early implementers, which means by the September date. So that's where the urgency comes in. After that, they're having to put the price on because we are no longer an early implementer. Now what workforce planning does is that they would create in, within Open Gov Now, what workforce planning does is that they would create, within OpenGov, a system where we can upload every single option that we have in our union contracts and in our employee manuals. So, say the police have a premium for, sorry, my mic is giving me feedback here. They have different premiums in their union contract for an associate's degree versus a bachelor's degree, or for an advanced certificate versus a basic certificate, or for an officer that lives in town, or for someone who speaks Spanish, things like that. And so, when we're running all of these models and we're preparing for budget, it's very difficult to get each one of those for each specific employee, especially out in the five-year projections, without having it linked to each employee. Right now, we're working in a spreadsheet that dates back two or three different finance directors. And I can guarantee that right now, it's not accurate. It's not, it's close, but there are so many links to so many different spreadsheets that there's no way it's accurate. What this program would do is it would allow us to integrate, first of all, into our system. So it would allow a direct upload of data, which we do not currently have with OpenGov. It would allow a custom deployment to integrate each of those for each position, and then update when a position changes. And I've checked with Forecast 5, to where I can take that data and plug it into the five-year model, to get scenarios then, so that we can run different scenarios. And my concern is, moving into the future, as we approach this fiscal cliff that all of the cities are approaching right now, personnel is a huge, huge part of our expenses, and we need to be right. And so I took a look at how many hours we spend on the current spreadsheets. And there's about 10 hours of admin time just getting the spreadsheets up and running. Then there's about 40 hours of finance tech and accounting time that's spent taking the data from one system and moving it into spreadsheets. So every column has to be individually downloaded, then the lines have to be trued up, manually checked. And then each of those spreadsheets is sent out to the departments, and then they have to manually do their thing. Then they're sent back. Then we manually enter each number, and then there's a back and forth with the spreadsheets. This software eliminates any back and forth. So you have permissions with all the different department heads. They can enter something, it can have a routing, so it can go to me, I can take a look, see if it's good. It can go to Joe, he can say, "This is good, but give me two alternatives. Give me something that's midway, something that's lower, something that's higher." And we can do like decision packages, where we can go back and forth. And then, once you settle on something, then you switch where it's at in the process, and it becomes part of that proposed budget, and then you can upload directly into our system. So there's that back and forth, and there's no longer this data entry issue with human error that gets made. And also, if we're in a negotiation, say, and we settle almost when the budget passes, you change the number in the table, and it fixes the whole budget, instead of having to find every place that it changes in the spreadsheets. So that's the big thing that I find would be extremely helpful. And I started talking about time, so let me finish that thought. About 40 hours of accountant time, then about 10 hours, I would say, of other department time. And the reason I say only 10 hours is they're still going to have to look at their budgets. They're still going to have to do the data entry. That's just going to be in the other system. So this is just the truing up of the spreadsheet piece, that they won't have to do anymore. And then, at least 60 hours of my time. I think that that's a conservative estimate. That's just the January to March timeframe, when I'm doing the back and forth with the spreadsheets. The May timeframe, when we're running all the different scenarios, I believe could be significantly improved with it. Again, until I have the tool, I can't actually say how much that piece will help, but I know all of the building up to the departmental will be a significant time saver. And one thing we've noticed since the budget cuts directly impacted admin, more than in the other departments, is that we are strained and having trouble meeting anything besides the bare necessities. And my concern heading into this financial cliff again is that we need to make sure that we have solid projections, that we can look at different revenue options and things like that. And when I'm handling the basic data entry stuff, I don't have time to do the forward thinking. And then, as far as how we can pay for it, this is an expense, and we've cut, and we cut, and we cut. There were, we ended the year, so I just finished the financial statements this afternoon, and we ended the year slightly over $800,000 higher than we projected in the general fund. This is good and bad news. It's good news in the sense that it's great to have more money. It's bad in the sense that we shouldn't be that far off, in my opinion. And several of the differences were in personnel, and projections, and things like that. And part of it is because we've had a lot of open positions, things like that. But having a model that you can work with, rather than a static spreadsheet, I believe would be really helpful in fine-tuning that. I'm not suggesting that we use that money. We have some other things, revenues, that we expected at the beginning of July that are going to wait until October.
So, yeah, don't, yeah.
So I'm not suggesting that...
We'll dig into that in more detail later. Okay, questions for Katie?
I have a question. How does the cost savings that you've calculated balance against any training that will need to be done at the department head level? Or who has to touch this new software, and who needs to be trained on it?
So most of it will be done within finance. The training itself is included in it, any of the training that has to happen. It's extremely user-friendly. As far as the departments go, that would be their piece. I would do the training for them, and we'd probably have someone from OpenGov assist with that, but there wouldn't be any additional expense. There would be some time at the initial deployment, yes.
I had a quick question. The 10 hours, the 40 hours, what is the timeframe? Did you say that was January to March?
So that's generally in the January to March timeframe?
Other questions? So in the current fiscal year budget, have, what savings or new revenue have we identified so far this year, within this budget, that in theory could say that we're treed up on the budget within this fiscal year?
Well, there are a couple different options. One is that beginning fund balance that wasn't anticipated.
Nope.
The other is that within finance, we're willing to forego the business license software, if we need to, in order to do this, because we believe that this will assist the department significantly more than the business licenses. And if we have to use paper for business licenses, we don't currently have a software, and that is in the budget, we would be willing to trade that.
So that's the extent of it at this point? So, I mean, so, system-wide, city-wide, we haven't, have there been other savings or new revenue? I know the answer to a couple of them. I'm feeding you. Okay. I don't want to worry about the answer at this point, then. Other questions?
I'm interested in hearing what you...
Well, we're saving money, we're getting more revenue, certainly with the new fee schedule over at the Art Center. We're saving money with how we're purchasing food over at the Senior Center. And that's two softballs.
Probably just don't know what that actually might be at this point, this early in the fiscal year.
I know, but just as you're settling in. All right. Any other questions?
It's just, I had a question just on giving up one new program for this, the business license. Is that fairly similar in cost?
The business license software, we have budgeted, I believe, for $21,000. The difference in here is that, due to the timing of the payment, this has the second year payment, the January 1st, so we would have sort of a duplicate payment. So the annual amount, when you look at the annual amount, is equivalent to the $21,000, but then when you look at the data payment, because the next payment comes due January 1st, there would be an additional amount this year. We do have those additional savings in personnel savings, so it does not require, at this time, we're not requesting any budget transfer. We don't legally need a budget transfer. This is simply because the amount of the contract exceeds the $100,000, which means that Joe does not have the authority to sign it. But we're not currently requesting any additional budget. At the mid-year transfer, when we have a better idea of what the revenues and the expenses will be like, that is when we would discuss other...
Okay. And I have a couple of questions. Would this existing software be included in part of that external reporting purposes to continue our trend towards transparency with our community?
Yes, it would. So, this allows the integration directly in the system, and that piece that's being built feeds into the stories and the transparency portal, as well as into the budgeting piece. So that gets built as part of this.
So what the public would see, if they were to go on to our city website, they could click on OpenGov, right? And then they can look, almost in real time, what our budget, what our financials are, and this workforce reporting would sort of add another dimension to interested citizens that would want to...
It's the deployment of the workforce that will enable us to be more real-time on the transparency.
Okay.
So it just gives us another...
And it sounds like it would go a long way into future projections, too, more accurate future projections. And that's, to me, incredibly important, given the fact that we've got some heavy lifting to do in the next five to eight years with PERS and other things. Okay, thank you.
So with your offer to forego approved product, I'm assuming that the value of business license software is the labor savings, more than anything else? What's the, so, 21 grand for a software license to get managed business licenses? I'm not sure how much revenue we get annually currently for business licenses.
It's about $75,000.
Does that allow them to renew them online, that program?
That's correct.
Yeah. So right now, people have to walk?
Right now, they're having to bring in paper.
So, yeah.
I'm okay with that.
I'm not suggesting to take up on that offer. All right, any more questions for Katie?
Just a couple of quick questions. And I know, when we met, you told me this, but two things. On the OpenGov Stories, the price goes, actually goes up from $2,700 to $5,500. Is there a reason it's going up as a part of this?
That's not going up as a part of this. That was going up next year as a part of the previous contract, and since it's in the same contract, you can see it in the contract.
Okay. And then, thank you. And then, maybe this is a question for Joe. The OpenGov Stories, maybe you could tell the folks in the room and for the public what that tool's for, because that's not really related to the workforce planning. And then, if we're going to commit to $22,000 plus for that, what's our plans to make sure we're using that tool effectively?
Do you want to take a stab first, and then I can fill in?
So, the OpenGov Stories is to hopefully take the information, starting with financial, but expanding it on to non-financial, and translate it so that the average citizen can access the information. We have that right now. As you know, we aren't using it to its full potential yet. Our goal for the second story that they will help us with is to do a full CIP implementation. As we talked about in our goals, is to have the public fully access the CIP. And so this would give them access into each individual project. We would set up the pages, and then from there, they could link into the financial data and the budgets on the projects, and hopefully link into also the maps, where they can, we can either tie to GIS or tie to another mapping like Google Maps, so they can see where the projects are. That's the goal of the next story that we'll be working on with CDD. The hope is to do that in the fall, as soon as the financial piece is done with the auditors next week. And so that Stories, right now, that's a lot of money for what we're using it for right now. We just have some very simple revenue Stories, but we believe that that will help us with the transparency for the citizens, once it gets up and running. And yes, there will need to be an effort put into it, and some dedicated time spent to make it worth that money.
Yeah.
Other future Stories that we've talked about is Sherwood Broadband, to get information out to folks in an easy-to-understand, digestible manner. There's a story to be told there, potentially the police department as well. So I think Katie's right. We've just started to use that feature. We have not used it to its full potential, but we have plans to.
Well, one of the reasons I asked the question is, I'm thinking about it in terms of, would you rather have that or business licenses in the short term?
We would rather have these tools versus the business license program.
Well, I'm just talking about Open Stories specifically. And I don't know if it's an apples-to-apples in terms of the cost for business license and the Open Stories, but it would be nice if our businesses and our community could file online, you know?
Have they been able to file online up to this point, or has it been paper up to this point?
Up to February, we had an online program, but it was custom-built for us, and they stopped, it stopped being supported.
And how's the reception on that been from businesses?
Well, given that we don't currently have anyone to process them, it's been a little rocky, but we're learning. And we are, we're all pitching in together, so we're getting there. We haven't been through the busy season, which is November, December, January.
Okay, so I'll just throw this out there. Is there any, how does everyone feel about keeping the, keeping both?
I'm not suggesting removing anything.
Okay.
Personally.
It just seems like this is part of Sherwood growing up, and these Stories, just for folks that are listening, these Stories are accessible documentation or stories about different things going on in the city that I imagine, correct me if I'm wrong, could be dynamic. In other words, the Stories might change, depending on how, whatever data's putting into this OpenGov, right? Which is, you can get an excellent picture or story of what's going on in our police department for next week, or the week that you check it out, what's going on, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's an incredible step for our city, to be able to provide that to our citizens. And I agree with Counselor Rosner, I think, also. It sounds like the mayor as well, and maybe others that, providing the service for online licensing, I think that's just part of serving our community, if we can make that happen.
Great. Any other questions for Katie? Okay, discussion from council. Thoughts, comments, ideas, motion?
Well, I, for one who's done budgets that incorporated spreadsheets upon spreadsheets that referred to spreadsheets, and you make one error over here, and these five of spreadsheets are now wrong, that I think the time-saving alone and the accuracy is probably well worth. I mean, I went to Kate with my concern about, we just cut our budget, two months later we're adding something back to our budget. But she explained to me the benefit that her department would get out of this, so I would be in favor of this.
I would, I'd like to add on to that. I have the unique perspective of having sold these types of tools to cities during my career, and if anything, Katie, I think you're underestimating the hours of benefit that you'll get out of this product. Yeah. And, but I've seen cities get huge efficiencies out of these types of tools, and especially as we're asking staff to do more with less. One of the ways you accomplish that is provide tooling to help them do their job, so they can focus on working on the business, not in the business. So I would support it as well.
Great. And my one, as I hinted at it, is regardless of what our ending fund balance ended up being, and we'll talk about that next month, I still want staff to strive to find efficiencies. And so that's why I asked the question, and I'll ask it again later. So, is there a motion on the proposal?
Are we gonna, I think, as part of that motion, there's nothing in the motion that talks about not doing...
Correct.
...the online business thing. But if we approve this, then...
We're not altering the rest of the...
Still want staff to not cut...
Right.
Okay. Because it's pre-approved, it's already in the budget.
Right. Unless you want to amend the resolution.
You'd have to amend the motion to say not to do that.
Yeah, I don't want to do that, so.
Go for it.
I'm on the one page, somebody else go for it.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-076, authorizing the city manager to amend the existing software agreement with OpenGov to increase the agreement amount and add software.
Second?
Discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving Resolution 2018... All in favor of approving Resolution 2018-076, authorizing the city manager to amend the existing software agreement and with Open Gov to increase the agreement amount and add software? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Katie.
Thanks, Katie.
City Manager report?
Mayor and Council, too, just reminders of events that are going to happen in Old Town over the next couple of weeks. So, this Thursday night is our Fall Art Walk in Old Town. Again, that's a partnership with Sherwood Main Streets. That's going to be Thursday, September 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Lots of activities in Old Town, lots of participating business. I believe the weather's going to be wonderful Thursday night, so I wanted to make sure that folks were planning on attending that. And then Clyde alluded to our big event next Thursday night, which is the Front Port Celebration, which is also being led by the Main Street Organization. But I know the Historical Society is very involved, the city's involved. That will be Thursday, September 13th. Railroad Street will be closed. There'll be a community dinner, and tickets are still available. I think people are finally learning about this event, and hopefully, ticket sales will reach the 125 number. That's the max that will be sold. That's to celebrate our 125th birthday. And then, there'll be a free event at the square with the June Bugs, I believe, is the band, and the cake, and some other things. So, next Thursday is another important night in Old Town. And I wanted to make sure that folks realized about both of those opportunities before the fall rains come. That's all I had? Yeah, I don't want to jinx it, so. Unless you had questions for myself or any of the department heads that are here? We still have work sessions and an executive session after this meeting, as a reminder.
Right. Can you give an update on where we're at with health insurance status? Evaluating options and the timing of things?
Well, our new HR analyst just started last week. She's going to be a key player in that. We have to also get the committee with the council involved and the two unions. We did have the PTO committee, as you guys know. The other committee meet last week. So, we have not had a meeting. We need to get that accelerated, so we can get that going. It will be for 2020, because 2019's already started. I mean, in terms of being able to change vendors and things like that, that was processed, started in the summer. So, any change we do would be calendar year 2020. So, we still have time to do that process.
So, the time to mention that would have been the summer and not today? Because it was my understanding that we were looking at next year.
No, I've mentioned that throughout this process, so.
It was my understanding it would be for 2020. Because things usually change around November, is when-
Correct.
Just why I figured we were further along than-
I apologize if you thought it was for 2019. It's the earliest we could do it, it was 2020, because we're on a calendar year.
Okay. Other questions for Joe?
I have one. Hey, could you, Joe, do you have an update on, from the school district, on how their project is coming along and/or the county on that new intersection by Walgreens? Seems like they're just starting that, any, from the county-
Julie, if you can come up-
Any word on the school district? I just wonder if things are moving along.
School district projects are moving along. I mean, obviously, school opened today, and there was a lot of construction at existing schools that had to get wrapped up, that I believe got wrapped up. The high school foundations are being poured and moving forward on the high school project, so.
So, they have all of their sewer line mysteries?
No.
And yet, they're constructing?
Yeah, we, the high school project is not your standard project. Because of the size and the speed and the complexity, they've broken it up into multiple pieces. And so, yes, they have started grading, and they've started pouring their foundations, but they haven't received their building permits to actually go vertical yet. And they're still working out details on sewer and public improvement plans and things like that. So, it's proceeding. I know, you know, we're all very anxious, but I keep reminding my staff, it's two years from now before the school's going to be open, so we have a little bit of time for all of these pieces to come together. But they're moving forward. As far as the intersection near the Walgreens, that's actually not the county. That's the state and the Deacon Development, and that's proceeding as well. I don't know whether or not we, they are moving according to the Deacon's schedule, but I haven't heard recently exactly what their timeframe is for completion of that.
Are those final site plans, are they, do we have a link on our website? Or do we, we would have to go to... Where would we, where would I find those site plans?
The site plan for the land use approval is on our website. We don't generally put the fine, like the final, you know, public improvement plans and things like that, but anybody could come to the City Hall and look at those plans.
Right. And the other question I had for you was, I had it a second ago, and then I forgot. It was a whole nother project. What was that? No, no, it wasn't Walgreens. It was, I'll think of it in a second, I know I will.
We can come back to it.
All right. Awesome.
We can come back to it. All right, other questions for Joe?
I have a question for Chief.
Yeah?
So, a few years ago, we participated in the Great Shakeout, and when Mr. Bryant came up and did his testimony, it reminded me of that. Are we doing that this year?
So, I think most of you know we're in transition, so I don't know if we have that planned. That's something pretty easy to throw together. We can participate. I would have to talk to Craig and coordinate that. But one thing that I thought you were going to mention that helped me on the date, we are participating, or maybe Craig can help me, with a Take Five, pretty significant emergency preparedness event that we're partnering with the Red Cross. And do you remember when that was? There he is. Thursday, September 20th. 28th. Take Five to Survive, I think, is what it is, but it's a, it's a really significant event. There was opportunities throughout Washington County Emergency Management Co-op, and frankly, we jumped on the chance to be one of the host sites. So, it'll be at Center for the Arts. It's a significant event with the Red Cross, news channels, and it's all about emergency preparedness, community preparedness, citizen awareness and preparedness. So, so that's coming. Yes.
LOC Conference.
27th.
27th?
27th. Still LOC Conference, but-
Okay.
The question was about the Great Shakeout, which is that one-day earthquake. So, as I said, we didn't have any plans right now, but it's probably something we could, we could put together for that day, so.
Thank you.
Other questions for Joe?
I'll just email you later. It'll come to me-
All right.
While I'm watching TV tonight.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, guys and gals. Council announcements, who'd like to start?
I will. Might as well jump out there, right? I just have two, the Sherwood 24 to comprehensive plan update committee met on the 29th, August 29th. And so, if you missed it, lots of good stuff, that all the materials are available on the website. So, Carrie Brennikee, I was sick, I couldn't go that night, I was sick, but I got, I went online and I read everything. So, a lot of, it was a great meeting. Yeah, it's all online. And then, the Sherwood Parks and Rec Committee meeting was not held, obviously, Monday night, because it was a holiday. So, it's going to be next Monday, 7:00 p.m. here, and the agenda is, or will be very soon on the city's website. That's it.
Great. Who'd like to go next?
I'll go. I don't have much either. Just welcome everybody back to school. I know tomorrow will be another back-to-school for the rest of the high schoolers, so that would be my son.
And slow down. Right, Chief?
Slow down in the school zones. Funny story, when I was 18, I got two tickets in the school zone by the same cop, two months apart. I was going the normal speed limit, just not the school's speed limit. Lesson learned.
I ought to be young.
Oh, to be, I'll always be young.
That's right.
Councilor Rosner and I attended last Saturday the Love Bites' first birthday, so that was pretty exciting, that business is just growing and blooming, and Carney Wilson was just over the moon happy for the success that they're having and the support that she has from our community. So, she was very gracious for that. And then, I think all of us, or most of us, are serving next Thursday at the front porch.
If I get my food handling permit.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you didn't get, see Chris's email to remind you that we need to get our food handlers permit, and he sent in information on that.
Okay. Should be fun.
Yes.
Council President?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do this. Yeah, I'll say the same thing, you know, thanks, Kim Russell, same thing about kids are back in school, everybody slow down. School speed zone limits are 20 miles an hour again, so I'm sure the city would appreciate your donations in the way of traffic tickets, but let's find a different way to help us there. The other, I guess the other thing I participated in just recently in place of Mayor Mays, who was unable to do so, is we had a contingent from Koto City, Japan, was here recently, met with, I think it was about 10 students, and they came with questions. And I did not anticipate a lot of their questions. Councilor Brousse was there with me as well, and-
He's used to it.
I thought-
Were there some pretty hard ones?
I thought they were going to be just fluffy, you know, what's your favorite TV show? Do you like Britney Spears, or whatever?
And what is your favorite TV show and why you like Britney Spears?
Right. And, I'll come back to you. But no, there were questions about why doesn't Oregon have sales tax? And I think, and I was, I hadn't thought about that. So, it was a great visit, and it was real great to be able to talk to them about Sherwood and Oregon and what we do and what we're doing for the future. So, that was a great visit. Other than that, Planning Commission met last week, last Tuesday, meets again this Tuesday. Planning Commission's doing a lot of great work out there, looking at some of our amendments and zoning for future development of Sherwood, and we're going to be meeting with them shortly in a combined work session, so really looking forward to that. Till then.
Great.
Ma'am?
If you'd like.
I'll be short. So, a couple of things. Citizens University is coming up. The applications are due September 21st, and it's a great course. It's a series of seven courses now, Joe? Seven, yeah. So, if you are interested in participating in your local government, Citizens University is the way to go. And that will start in October? Okay. October 4th. Okay. If you are, if you are or not a member of the Friends of the Toilton River Wildlife Refuge, they are having their annual meeting coming up on September 22nd. And this is an annual meeting for friends. If you're not a friend, you can go on to friendsofthetoiltonrefuge.org and register. But they, what's interesting for this Saturday, or Saturday, the 22nd, is they'll be traveling to Wapato Lake, and Larry, I can't pronounce his right, his last name, Klimak, I think, is going to be leading a tour out at the Wildlife Refuge's Wapato Arm out near Gaston. And if you've never been out there, it's really cool. So, it's a really great opportunity to go out there as part of the Friends group and get a tour of the Wapato Lake Arm. Fall classes are now online, the signups are now online for the Sherwood Center for the Arts. There's some awesome classes. I was just looking at one today for a photography class coming up in October. So, they have classes for adults and kids, and they've got some really great, high-quality instructors. So, check that out. And that is it for me.
Right. Councilor Brousse?
Okay, I have tons, but I'll try to make it fast. First off, in the library, there's a couple of interesting things happening. First of which is, the Library of Things is now open, starting today. And if you are curious as to what exists, go to sherwoodoregon.gov, hashtag Library of Things. They have all kinds of arts, crafts, equipment, tech gadgets, games, home tools, and more to check out. Also, in the library, they are narrowing down the candidates for the librarian position, and it went from 74, I believe, down to two. So-
That's whittling it down.
That's whittling it down. So, that's happening. As for the Senior Center, well, as you know, the library puts out this wonderful newsletter. Well, the Senior Center's doing the same thing. And so, the Friends of the Senior Center met, and they're still working on their vision and their planning and all their different activities at the Senior Center, just moving and shaking, going on there as well. I participated in the Habitat for Humanity build while these two were at the Love Bites' birthday celebration. And I'm pleased- But my husband came along with me, and he and I laid the floor of the new home. So, we put down laminate flooring in the living room and the kitchen. So, that was pretty exciting. I've never done that before. So, that's, that happened. Let's see, participated in the Chamber Golf Tournament, which was a lot of fun. There were 72 golfers, and pleased to announce, my team came in last.
Prizes for that.
There were prizes for that, yeah. But we had a lot of fun. Let's see, what else? I think, oh, went to the WEA breakfast where our Senator Wyden was there. And his priorities for the year are focusing on the middle class, tax break, infrastructure, Skoggan's DM, and trade. And that's it for tonight.
Great. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor?
Well, I will keep it short, because most of you stole all my thunder, so, but that's okay. Just real quick, it's since the last meeting, I did attend the Historical Society Board Meeting. Most of the conversation in the board meeting was about the Front Port Celebration. They have a lot of cool history, Sherwood history exhibits that are going to be part of that celebration. I'm looking forward to seeing. And this is going to be a strange request, but they're having some work done on that building in the basement. And if you don't know, they have this, a very elaborate, large train set, train layout that emulates downtown historic, downtown Sherwood.
Right.
And to do the work, they need to move the train set. So, if anyone out there in TV land or sitting here knows how to move a really large train set like that that's attached to the wall, they could use your help. Yes, so.
They can't just lift it up out of the way?
I don't, it's, yeah. I don't know how you do it without breaking it.
Barely suspend it from the ceiling or something.
Yeah. But it is, if you haven't had a chance to go down there and look at it, it's pretty neat. I got a, Clyde gave me a tour last week, which was fascinating, so. And that's all I got.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, buy tickets if you haven't already. I need to for the celebration next Thursday. In addition to Planning Commission joint session or two between now and year-end, it's my goal to schedule joint sessions with all of our advisory boards and commissions, including certainly with Budget to review year-end numbers as much of the first quarter that we can, so we're on top of, on top of things. Yeah, I mean, it'll give us a chance to talk about all the good work that they're doing and the things that they want us to be aware of for next year. So, it'll, again, Planning Commission, there is a tremendous amount of things, but the core structure of essentially SWAT, understanding strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats for each, and, you know, having good, having good conversation about what's going on in their space. So, with that, if nothing else, we will adjourn to a joint City Council, URA Board Executive Session.